allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. First thing on our agenda is our auditor's financial work. Bob?
Okay, we began 2021 with a general fund cash balance of fourteen million nine hundred eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five dollars with projected miscellaneous revenue and property tax and deducting the the tax cap. Our total available sixty-six million, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, eighty-one dollars. We also deduct the encumbrances, the budget, and put back in what we anticipate as unused budget and our deduct also our minimum balance. Our beginning net balance is six million, one hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-three dollars. We've granted additional appropriations of one million, seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, three thirty-five prior to today for two thousand and twenty-one in the general fund. There were forty-one thou- one hundred and forty-one thousand, five hundred dollars of requests today. And so there are, when you deduct our miscellaneous expenditures, our beginning or our balance as of right now of uncommitted funds is four million, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars. We move on to the revenue report. It has a couple of things of note on the first page under taxes, the state gaming, the oh-one-two-three. You can see that we did have a deposit in September of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, which is about eighty percent of what we should be getting. That always came in one big check, but because of the casinos being shut down, there wasn't the revenue to support that. We now have received, I believe that was the first day of October, we see the difference. So we did receive the, a little bit more than three hundred and fifty thousand dollars as we had hoped that we would, but, and moving down to the bottom under other financial services, just one thing in note, and I'll mention something else associated with this a little bit later, under oh-seven-six-one reimbursements, internal refunds. There's a million dollars budgeted. We put eighty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars and thirty-three cents a month into there, and that's coming from the health insurance fund. So we, we do, we are, have been doing that and note that in a, in a second here. Moving on to the fund balances. The general fund, fund number one thousand, eleven million dollar cash balance at the end of, of September. Eleven forty-three, there was a hundred thousand dollars put into the cumulative voting system fund, and that was budgeted in Edith, and we have made that transfer. So you now have two hundred thousand dollars for, for funds available for voting system. Down, fund number two thousand, I haven't mentioned this for a couple of years, but back a few years ago, this cash balance for the probation user fees, that did get down to, I believe, about fifty thousand dollars at the end of the year, and we have worked our way up by changing some personnel that's paid out of there and some other things, and we have got that over, you know, getting two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar balance there. Forty-seven-ten is the self-insurance fund, and that one did go down more than a quarter million dollars in, for the month, and we are at eight point three million dollars. And that's what I have for the funds, and I will, let me keep going here on. Oh, and when we get to these funds that start at the eight thousand, these are grants, eight thousand and nine thousand are, are grants. And so if you see some of these that are in red with, with negatives and grants, a number of those are reimbursable grants. That means we spend the money and then they pay us back. So a lot of these grants, the highest number we ever get for reimbursable grant is, is zero dollars because we have to pay it first. Now, and I don't think I, don't think I put this in the packet, I don't believe. Up on the screen, this is what I, I do each, each pay period, and this is general fund, health insurance, and, and for, for every pay period. So we are putting in close to three hundred thousand dollars is going into, to the health insurance fund each, each pay period, and that's based on actual usage. So it is going to vary from one month to the other. But one thing I wanted to whoops, mention was that we have more money budgeted in there than what we are going to need into the general fund. And over here on the, on the right-hand side, the last few numbers there, well, we have three hundred thousand dollars is what we pretty much budgeted. If we average that out, right now we're averaging two hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars per pay period. So I'm projecting we need one point four million the rest of the year. So we have a hundred and eighty-three, a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars of potential balance right now if we finish the year using the same amount that we are right now. So we're only using ninety-seven percent of that. So what, what I would propose, since the health insurance fund is seeing a decreased cash balance, that we suspend the moving the eighty-three thousand, three thirty-three, thirty-three from the health insurance fund to the general fund. And that, so that would be like a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. We have a hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars less potential usage in the fund than what we had estimated to be when the year started. So that would help that fund a little bit if, if the council would be in, in favor of that of just not moving the eighty-three thousand dollars for November and December.
Thoughts from council?
Bob, I've never really looked at all these histories of grants.
Oh, yeah.
I've never really entertained and looked at all these lists of grants. Some of them are Help America Vote. Can you explain why Indiana American Water would give a a grant, what, degrees of skills for developers or what?
I can't answer that. There's too many for. Is Ms. Sharon, can she come up to the podium and answer that?
We'll, we'll take their money, but I don't understand that.
American Water has made donations to the WOW program as well as to LAPC. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it's kind of. Thank you.
They have, they have community funds that they need to spend.
Right.
And so they, they contacted us and said, here's some money.
Yeah.
Just that. And I'm in favor of what Bob has suggested, suspending the contribution to the fund to keep that balance. Good.
Okay, thank you, Barry. We need to probably have a formal motion to.
Can you explain that? I mean, we're taking it from the general fund and putting it into the, into the self-insurance?
No, it's going from the self-insurance fund into the general fund to help support that. So since we do, are spending less in the general fund than what we anticipated by almost that same amount.
So this will help up the self-insurance fund a little bit. Okay, yes.
Do I have a motion to that effect?
I'll make the motion to do so.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Richard, a second from Councilwoman Basham to suspend the transfer from the health insurance, self-insurance line to the general fund. Any discussion?
Matt, I was gonna say that's through December, but I think that's the only time you got it. You're not doing it next year, are you?
Correct. Yeah. So it'd be just the next two months. Yes. Is that clear enough? Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes. Thank you for the suggestion, Bob. All right, Treasurers' Report.
Morning. Interest for September was in the amount of forty-six thousand, three hundred seventy-nine dollars and thirteen cents. Still aren't seeing any movement on interest rates and not sure when that might happen. So as far as where we're at with the general fund, with the revised forecasted budget for that of five hundred thousand, we're at seventy-five percent, collected at seventy-five percent through the year. The amount for general fund right now is three hundred seventy-five thousand, six hundred forty-six dollars and seventy-three cents out of a total of five hundred eighty-two thousand, five hundred seventeen dollars and thirty-three cents. And I don't believe there were any items on the distribution to point out other than we had Francis Powers Trust CD, which is kind of a perpetual CD, come up for renewal last month, earned a little bit of interest, and that interest then goes to, I believe, is it the Carrie Home Donation Fund? No, it remains in that fund. Okay. So that one was, looked a little bit different, Fund Fifty-Nine Fifty, but other than that, everything else seemed consistent. And that was all I had.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any questions for Jennifer? Thank you much. Next up, we have a public comment concerning any of our agenda items before us this morning. Hearing none. We've got our consent agenda before us. Any items that need to be removed from that before we consider that? If not, I'll take a motion to approve, which includes the minutes from our budget hearings and our regular meeting in September.
I'll make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilwoman Vernon, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next, we have additional appropriations, if I can get my sheet flipped over, from Superior Court Two.
That has been withdrawn.
That's been withdrawn?
Yes.
Okay. And next is Drug Enforcement Fund with the prosecutor.
I make a motion to appropriate eight thousand, thirty-six dollars from the Drug Enforcement Fund, two, twenty-five oh-six as presented.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Dolam, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the appropriation from the Drug Enforcement Fund, twenty-five oh-seven, in the amount of eight thousand, thirty-six dollars. Discussion. Morning, Pat.
Good morning. First, happy National Farmers' Day. October twelfth is a day across the country. We give thanks to all farmers for the work they do to keep us fed, and I think we should recognize that here too locally. So thank you. This is the Drug Enforcement Fund. This is the fund where drug forfeiture money is ordered by the court to be allowed to be expended for law enforcement needs. And this is for our part-time worker who is working extra hours this year due to the ups and downs of staffing.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next, we have Fund Twenty-five Sixty.
I make a motion to appropriate twenty thousand dollars from the pre-trial diversion fund, Twenty-five Sixty, as presented.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Dolam, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve the pre-trial diversion fund, Twenty-five Sixty appropriation for the amount of twenty thousand dollars. Discussion.
Thank you. This is the pay-up, obviously transcription. It's, all the interviews now are audio and video recorded when you go to trial. Some of the quality of those is such that you have to actually pay a transcription as a, a court reporter to transcribe them to aid the jurors. So as they are watching the, the video, they can read along and actually see what the words are, hear them and see them. Due to the record number of jury trials this year, this cost has exceeded what we normally would spend.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Thank you. Next up, we have the coroner appropriation.
Make a motion that we approve the coroner's department out of the general fund, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for autopsies and fourteen thousand for body transfers for a total of a hundred and thirty-four thousand.
Second, Matt.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilwoman Vernon, a second from Councilman Murray, to approve the general fund appropriation of a hundred and thirty-four thousand for the coroner. Discussion. Hi, Carrie.
Hi, good morning. Just, I, I seem like, I sound like a broken record. I don't know. We're about a hundred and fifty total accepted cases and deaths reported over last year at this time, which means we have more autopsies. We're about, for September, we've got about thirty thousand dollars in outstanding bills for autopsies and for body transfer. We're about two thousand. So I anticipate maybe being back next month. I was hoping this would cover it, but I won't know in, for another month.
And I asked Bob, we all received our, up to the third quarter numbers, but this is the latest number. So as you can see, you know, Carrie's got seven thousand dollars in autopsies and eight thousand dollars in body transfers left. So, you know, this isn't an unreasonable amount of money, and and as she said, she will be closely monitoring this. So maybe in November, we'll need more money. But I do want to ask her one thing. We all received on the coroner's September report, and I will commend Carrie. I mean, she's done a great job with revenue this year. I mean, twelve thousand dollars revenue going back to the general fund for September. So there have been some changes in that department for the good, revenue, but as we see, we're needing to spend more money. So thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Carrie Home, and Linda is here instead of Rebecca for a salary statement.
I'll make a motion. We approve a salary statement, twenty-twenty-one, for residential and community-based service director, PAT Five, to reclassification, which was originally a deputy director, exec two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Hate for it to die for a lack of a second. Linda came down for nothing. All right. I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Richard to approve the salary statement from Carrie Home as described by Mr. Murray for a total of sixty-five thousand, one hundred and fifty-five dollars. Discussion, Linda.
Back at the September commissioners' meeting, we asked to create this position and eliminate the deputy director position. The Family Preservation Federal Act came into effect this month, and it requires that we provide aftercare services and accreditation and quality residential treatment provider designation. And so we looked at that deputy director job title and made some changes to it. And so this position actually will be a cost savings going forward because it's a PAT Five instead of an exec two, I believe it was. And we already planned for this change for the twenty-twenty-two budget. So we're just asking for your approval of the position today.
Yes, discussion. Yes, we're just basically moving it forward a little bit. So any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Thank you. Next, we have WIC. Salary statements there.
Make a motion. We approve the salary statement for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, sixty-one dollars for the WIC eight, eight, eight-zero NSA budget for the October through December fiscal year twenty-one. And do I need to do the second one as well, Bob?
Second.
One at a time, okay.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve the salary statement for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand, sixty-one dollars. Discussion. Hi, Alicia.
Hi, good morning. These are WIC salary statements for our federal fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, which begins October first. So there's a statement for the remainder of the calendar year, October through December.
All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. For the first one, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next up.
Make a motion for a salary statement of five hundred and sixteen thousand, nineteen dollars for the budget for twenty-twenty-two for the months of January through September.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve the salary statement for WIC as described for five hundred and sixteen thousand, nineteen dollars. Discussion. Again, yes, basically the same thing, right?
Basically the same thing. It's just through the end of our fiscal year, which is September thirtieth.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next up.
I'll make a motion. We approve the salary statement of up to eighteen dollars an hour for WIC eight, eight, eight-two, PC budget listed for October through December of twenty-twenty-one.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve the salary statement for WIC for up to eighteen dollars per hour for the October through December timeframe. Discussion.
Again, just the salary statement for my part-time staff.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved.
All right. The last one, I'll make a motion. We approve the salary statement for up to eighteen dollars an hour for WIC eight, eight, eight-two, PC budget listed for January through September of twenty-twenty-two.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilman Richard, to approve the salary statement for WIC for the budget eight, eight, eight-two, up to eighteen dollars per hour for the January through September timeframe. And it's the same thing. So any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next up, we have Highway MVH appropriation.
I'd like to move for the, make a motion to approve the appropriation for MVH restricted fund eleven-seventy-three for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for street materials.
Second. I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Richard, a second from Councilman Basham to approve the MVH restricted fund eleven-seventy-three appropriation for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Discussion. Hi, Stu.
Hi. This is just moving the quarter million out of our cash balance to cover some additional paving and preservation that we've been doing this year.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Now, the MVH unrestricted fund.
I'd like to move an, a motion for MV, approval of the appropriation for MVH unrestricted fund eleven-seventy-six in the amount of fifty thousand dollars street materials.
Second. I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Richard, a second from Councilman Basham to approve the MVH unrestricted fund eleven-seventy-six appropriation for fifty thousand dollars.
Same purpose. This is sort of safety money for when the final quantities come in on our current plan. We're putting it in unrestricted because of all those balance deals. We can do a ledger into restricted, but if we appropriate and restrict it and don't spend it, all these rules hamstring that money. That makes sense.
Everybody understand kind of the reasoning? Okay. Any other questions? Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next, we have Community Crossings.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the grant appropriation of Community Crossings Fund Ninety-One Zero Eight in the amount of three hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars.
Second. I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Richard, a second from Councilman Basham, to approve the Community Crossing Fund Ninety-One Oh-Eight appropriation of three hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars. Discussion.
This is just our twenty-twenty-one dash one. It's the first call for community crossings. We were approved. The three hundred and thirty is half the cost of our planned call for.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stu. Next, we have Rainy Day Appropriation.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of Rainy Day Fund eleven-eighty-six appropriation for one thousand, seven hundred and forty-five.
Second. I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Richard, a second from Councilman Basham, to approve the Rainy Day Fund eleven-eighty-six appropriation for one thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. Discussion.
What, what we had here was this, this is money, or when, when we finished off the, the jail lease, the money was refunded to us by the, by the holding company, by the, the Bank of New York. And what the statute required that we put that money into either the general fund or the rainy day fund, and we put it into the rainy day fund. And then after, soon after that transfer was made, then we received a bill for the tax return, and this was always done by, by the Bank of New York. They paid it out of their money. So now once the money was put into the rainy day fund, then of course we get one more bill. So the seventeen hundred and forty-five dollars, I'm hoping that this is the last bill, the last income tax. We may have another one next year. But, so we don't have any money left. You know, the money has been turned back over from the bank in, into us. So we put, I believe it was like twenty-four thousand dollars into the rainy day fund. So now we're taking a little bit out to pay this bill.
Okay. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. All of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved. Next up, we have Committee, Committee Reports. Any of those? Other business? Or unfinished and new business? If there's nothing else, I'll, Josh, you want to come up and talk about resolution? Probably ought to get a motion on the floor first.
I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution Twenty-One, twenty-twenty-one dash thirty-four dash C L.
Second.
I have a motion on the floor from Councilman Murray, a second from Councilwoman Hamilton, to approve Resolution Twenty-Twenty-One dash thirty-four dash C L, approving the Tepic New County Library issuance of bonds and appropriation. So, Josh?
Chairman Underwood. So good morning. My name is Josh Holman. I work at the Tepic New County Public Library. Have an official title as county librarian. I try not to use that so that I can at least think that I'm going into work every day and doing something productive. I stand before you today on behalf of the Board of Trustees of the Tepic New County Public Library. They send their regrets in being unable to be present with you today, but we hope that we still can convey the information that's needed and the knowledge that you may gain regarding this project for the Tepic New County Public Library. Personally, it's going on twenty years of my living and working in this community. This is the longest I have lived in any community. It's the longest I've been on any particular job. And with relation to this project, we are working in a thirty-two-year-old building. Our building was constructed in nineteen eighty-nine. It, it was a big deal when it happened. I think there were some fireworks going on when it happened as well for folks who lived in this community at the, at that time regarding taxes. And nevertheless, the building is here. We've used it as best we can. It's going to continue to be used. However, we are looking to update the building and provide a renovation to the building that would allow us to better serve our community and to be a greater presence here in the downtown Lafayette area. So we, in the past, have appreciated the support of the county council, and we seek your support again. Just as a reminder for y'all, y'all serve as the fiscal body for the library because we have appointed board members as opposed to elected board members. And so as you consider this particular activity, your role in approving a bond resolution, any new appropriation that we need to do, the library being we, this county council has to approve. And so it's called an additional appropriation, but it's really a new appropriation as we issue a new general obligation bond, as you can see, in the amount of five point five, seven-five million dollars. Just a reminder as well, this does not impact the operations or the finances of the county in any shape, form, or fashion. This is revenue that would be generated for the library and come to the library, and is based on our same current tax rate. No increases in taxes for this particular project. For the past fourteen years, we built three new branches. Almost twenty years ago, the Board of Trustees decided they would expand library services by taking the library service out to the community, out to the county, out to folks where they resided. And then when that was done, to come back and do work on this downtown library. And so that's where we are today. We're working with Bond Counsel, Ice Miller, I'm sure you're familiar with them, and also a financial advisor, Baker and Tilly, who in the past was named Ambar and Associates. The local architect is Keystone. It's our first time working with them, but we're excited. And thus far, our working relationship is going well, so that bodes well for this particular project. And so you may wonder about the project and the scope of the project, and it would have been better if I had a nice presentation with a PowerPoint. But in truth, we don't completely know what we will do. We have an idea of what we want to do, an idea of what we need to do, but what we will be able to, to do will be based on the five point five, seven-five dollar amount and what we can do under the constraints of that particular budget. For the purposes of this discussion, if it would be helpful to you, I do have some cost estimates for the specific areas that we plan to work in. And so I'd be glad to hand that out to the council if y'all would like to see that. And, Bob? Councilman Dolm. Councilman Dolan wants, and she's over there by herself.
Is it all about the building, Josh?
I'm sorry.
Is it all about the building, or are you going to buy some property around it to expand the building for five million?
Did I not give you all enough copies? Bob? So as y'all look at this document, realize that this is an estimate, and you see the bottom line of this estimate is six point seven million dollars. And I'm saying, hey, we only want to do five point five, there's a reason for that. Any amount that goes past five point five seven five million dollars becomes a petition remuneration process. And though I've been living here for twenty years almost, I don't want to go through a petition remuneration process that might become a good reason to leave the community. So we are keeping this project under this cap. Again, these are estimates, and as you look at these estimates, I can explain, I think, a little bit better what we're really trying to do because there are five to six specific things that we're trying to do for the downtown library. Specifically, yes, we need to update it regarding just general conditions from flooring and lighting and painting and those type of things. We also know we need to upgrade our mechanical HVAC system as well as all of our electrical systems, specifically our fire suppression unit system, which is also, again, a thirty-year-old item. So everything that we talk about in the building in terms of the true mechanicals are almost thirty years. Yes, we replaced items associated with the HVAC on a replacement schedule, actually about fourteen years, actually eighteen years ago. What we really want to do is change the front of the library some so that people recognize that it's a library, because it just looks like a building as you pass up the street. The name of the library is very high up and not at eye level even as you're driving in a car, and so you don't see that. So we would really like to upgrade the facade of the building, starting where the doors are on South Street, very near where the bus stops, and continuing all the way back, all the way back really to the corner. So this involves the Red Crown Mini Museum as well, and trying to beautify that corner because currently, it doesn't, there's nothing attractive at all about that corner from not just the unsettled concrete in the parking lot, but just the grass and everything that's there. And so that's what the reference is to the Red Crown Mini Museum enhancements. And then I've also already referred to the South Street entry. For our roof, we've had roofing problems for the past six to eight years. We've had several attempts to fix that roof, we've been unable to do so. It is a fifty-year roof in its thirty-second year. So we are still hesitant about completely replacing the roof. But you see the estimate there, were we to do so, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars to replace the roof of that forty-nine thousand square foot building. As a part, a reference to the challenges when the building was built back in nineteen eighty-seven, nineteen eighty-eight, when funding and everything was going on, on Seventh Street, there is a courtyard just outside this building. That courtyard was actually meant to be part of the building, but because of the tax situation that happened way back, they downsized the building, and that was something that we lost. And so it's our intent to make that courtyard or small patio on Seventh Street to enclose it and enlarge the meeting rooms as well as it would also serve as a space for our children's and youth programming. And so we would enclose that space probably all the way to the sidewalk, actually, is what the architect has recommended. We would have been happy with just enclosing the patio, so that's something else that's very different that we would do to the building. So I think I'm going to, oh, and one other thing, we intend to add some study rooms to the building. Twelve, fourteen years ago, we went away from study rooms. They weren't as popular, they've become very popular, they are some of the most popular things at all three of our branches, including our newest branch out at We Are Prairie, especially with the elementary school right across the street. And so we're going to increase our study rooms at the downtown library as well. The scope of the project, I've sort of given to you, the timeline, we anticipate bids in February of 2022, and then we would like the work to start the summer of 22. The work will be done in phases, we do not want to close the library for any long-term amount of time, several months at a time, that's not what we're interested in doing. At maximum, we hope, if we have to close, it might be in a two-week stretch at any given time. Nevertheless, it will be a multi-year project and probably not done until fall of 23. But we're going to do as best we can to keep the library open. Commissioner Murtaugh just indicated a call that he received yesterday because the library was closed for one day for our staff development day. Finally, on behalf of the board, we'd ask you to consider this particular project and your approval of it. We would very much appreciate your support. I'm glad to answer any questions that I can regarding this project or anything that's going on with the Tepic New County Public Library. Thank you.
Any questions?
I do have one, can you be a little bit more specific on the Red Crown enhancements? The building there will stay appearing as to be a service station?
Yes, sir, from the sense of Councilman Richards, let me just think about years for a minute, as I always go back, I have to always remember there was a COVID year, and yes, it's more than one year, it's more than twelve months, but when I say when something occurred, I have to remember to add that into. I believe, back in 2018, we, the Tepic New County Public Library, did some enhancements to that building as we installed a twenty-four-hour library inside one of the garage bays. And so as a part of that work, we touched up everything in terms of the brick on that building. We also touched up and added windows in specific areas in that building. And so we spent about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars at that particular point in time. With the twenty-four-hour library being a part of that building, there is no intent to in any way close that building. We all know about the passing of Don Stein, Don had several memorabilia pieces in that space that he had actually taken out about a year and a half, two years before his passing. And so we still are building up in very small increments some things that go in the display windows because people still stop to see that particular building. It's one of seven left in the country. And the Tepic New County Public Library, with a service operation in that building, now understands and is committing funds, not just through this project, but through minimal repair or whatever has to be done to that building and is a part of our operations. It goes nowhere, stays right there. Long answer, but I wanted to put it in the context, I could have just said yes.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
Josh, you said the taxes weren't going to go up, where's this money coming from again?
This money comes from the issuance of a new general obligation bond. We're on a timeframe, and generally speaking, we issue bonds in about a seventy-five to ninety-day window. We've already started that window, my Board of Trustees took some action at their Tuesday meeting in October, the first Tuesday of the month, and they will take their final action in their Tuesday meeting in November, November the second. We expect to bid the bonds in late November and actually sell the bonds in December. So it is completely new money. We, Tepic New County Public Library, have, stop and think again before I make a wrong statement. Our only bond payment, starting in 2022, will be for the We Are Prairie branch. Every other building that we own is paid off. And so that's why issuing a new bond will actually replace that, the tax monies that would quote-unquote "tax rate" that would come off the roll for all past debts. So that's why it's a new bond, but it's the same tax rate. And by the way, our tax rate is point zero seven cents per one hundred dollars of assessed valuation of property that anybody owns in this community. And everywhere except West Lafayette proper. So that's what our library district is, point zero seven cents.
So you got about a million, one point two million difference in the bid and what you got. How's that going to be made up?
Well, I think it's going to be made up by three things. One, the Board of Trustees, we have to prioritize what gets done, what doesn't get done. We have to work within the context of a budget by way of the general obligation bond. So that's one of the factors that will play into this. Another factor will be, is there any outside money that we can raise? We probably can get some local grants. We also may apply for larger grants that might be statewide. The third thing is, we actually, for the We Are Prairie branch, received two unexpected donations. One to the tune of about a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars, and the other to the tune of a hundred thousand dollars. And if you visit the We Are Prairie branch, you'll notice that the meeting room has the name of Dr. Louis Herschel. Again, not an individual that I met prior to being here. His wife, Marjorie, recently passed away. But in the context of building that building, she wanted to name something in honor of her husband, and she gave us a hundred thousand dollars to do so. So we didn't spend a hundred thousand dollars on that meeting room. I know we have local press here, so I don't know what that translates to, but you know, when you receive gifts, you spend what you need to, and what's left over, you apply in other ways. We will apply a part of that money, Councilman Basham, to this particular project, and in doing so, will still recognize and honor Dr. Louis Herschel or Marge Herschel, whatever her family so desires.
I've been in that building several times, Josh, and I'm sure the HVAC and all that needs to be done. I go by the building probably ten times a day. You can't see the building for all the trees.
Absolutely.
You have a head count, people enter that building and use that building daily? I mean, that's a lot of money just to make it look pretty.
A lot of money to make it look pretty.
The books are still there.
Yes, sir, we still have books. So generally speaking, in terms of our head count, again, we're in a COVID year. We've not come out of the COVID year. Our numbers are down in terms of every aspect of our operations. And yet, we restarted Storytime about, okay, so now we're in October, so actually, the first week of September, we restarted Storytime programs. We reopened our meeting rooms because people have been asking and asking throughout the COVID year, can we schedule meetings in your meeting rooms? And we've said, no, we can't, but we redid that finally, right after Labor Day. If I go back to 2019, again, I just have to stop and make sure I'm in the right timeframe. Yep, 2019. We circulate about one point six million items a year. We have about eight hundred thousand visitors who come to the library on an annual basis. We have a collection budget of one million dollars that includes everything in print and online electronic databases, everything like that. We have over three hundred and fifty thousand people who attend programs for the Tepic New County Public Library. So when we think of a community that, well, I can't say a community, when we think of the library district, all right, that serves about a hundred and sixty thousand people, we want and are willing to do whatever we can to meet the needs from an information needs and library experience of that community. And so our numbers are down, they're going to continue to be down. But because the numbers are down, doesn't detract from the need for the building to be at its best operating efficiency. And that's what we're looking for in a thirty-two-year-old building. We all have homes. We all have homes. We would not let our homes go for thirty-plus years without doing something to the electrical, the mechanical, or painting a door absolutely unequivocally. And I would challenge anyone in this room, including y'all, to say you would do something different. That's where we are, and that's what we need. We submit ourselves to your vote, it's your decision to approve this or not, but we hope that you consider approving it.
Any other questions, discussion?
Yeah, so I love that, I love that library. Where is there an opportunity for the public to give you feedback on what they would like to see done? What would you recommend that they do? Is there going to be public hearings, or should they just send you an email, or what would you recommend?
Certainly, we'd accept emails and any suggestions. In actuality, we have a new strategic plan that was adopted in April of 2021. And we did a survey of the public in terms of operations and programs and services just prior to adopting, actually just prior, actually that survey and those focus groups that were held by the library, including focus groups for the board, for the staff, and for the public, were held this past November. So we received some input at that point in time, study rooms was part of that, that said what people would like to see regarding library services.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That is approved.
Thank you all very much, we would be happy to bring back some plans, if you'd like to see some plans of the library and what, once they're drawn, and what we plan to do so that y'all can be updated on that, we'd be glad to do that. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Commissioner FYI.
Good morning. Start out with some really good news. The Greater Lafayette Community won the Indiana Chamber Community of the Year Award. You probably saw some media in regard to that. There is a recognition dinner on November ninth that we'll be attending, so if you have any interest in that, there's some additional tickets available. We can get you details on if you would care to attend. The, you also probably saw some media in regard to the Ready Grant that has been submitted. Again, I think I touched on that at last month's meeting, but that's a partnership with Benton County, Carroll County, Fountain, Warren, and White to form a region in which to apply for the fifty-million-dollar grant through the state. That, again, has been completed with the help of GLC and our partners across the region, and we should have a decision on that in December, so keep your fingers crossed on that. I think I also mentioned too, if you have any legislative issues, let me know. I know our association is meeting this Thursday to finalize our legislative agenda for the upcoming session. It's hard to believe that the session's going to be starting soon. The County's United Way campaign starts next month, it's a short period as usual. We'll be going back to the traditional pledge cards, we did it a little differently last year during COVID. But if we do have a little friendly competition with the city of Lafayette, I am a little concerned about us winning that this year, we lost our number-one donor this year or so. So we do have some makeup ground to do, so any contribution you care to make, that would be greatly appreciated if you could do it through the county. There is an e-waste day today, or I'm sorry, this Saturday, from eight to two at the McCutcheon parking lot. So that's open to any Tepic New County resident who has any electronics that they want to recycle. They basically will accept anything that has a cord, as long as it does not have refrigerant, so it can't be a refrigerator, or air conditioner, or humidifier, that kind of thing. They're also going to have a shred truck there that day, so if you have any documents that you want to shred, please spread that along, again, it's open to any Tepic New County resident. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
You can see the note about our next meeting there in front of you about the update will be taking place. Anything to add there, Bob, with respect to that?
Nope.
Okay. And then our next, well, that's about our next meeting, any public comment? If not, I'll take the last motion.
Motion dismissed.
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned, thank you, everyone.